Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled March 19th Board of Education meeting. If you would take a few seconds here and turn off any cell phones that might be on. They interfere with our TV broadcast. And if you would rise and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First order of business, Secretary McFarland, could you please take attendance?
Yes, I can. President Singer.
Here.
Vice President Branstad.
Here.
Treasurer Frazee.
Here.
Member Baker. Scott. Member Blais.
Here.
Member Fedell.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Very good, thank you. Moving into the consent agenda, we have five items. Approval of the minutes from February 19th. We have staff members who had announced their resignations. Approval of the 2018 summer wage rates for teachers and employees for summer school. Approval of payment of the school system bills for the month of January. And legal invoices for payment. Do we have any additions or deletions from the consent agenda? I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I move approval of consent agenda items 2.1 through 2.5.
Support. Okay, we have moved by Angela and support by Mary. And we will move into item 3.0.
We have to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll take a vote, all in favor of approval of consent agendas 2.1 through 2.5.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it's unanimous. Moving into item 3.0, we've got the Board of Education Matters, Presentation to the Board, Mr. Sherrill.
As you know, Midland High School received an Educational Excellence Award this year, sponsored by SETSEG Insurance Company and MASB. And we have represented this organization here tonight to present that to us. So I will have Scott and company come up. If you'd like to take over the mic and do your presentation, introduce yourself. I think so.
Is that better?
I can't hear you yet.
No?
Is it on?
Is that better?
There you go, thank you.
Well, thank you for everybody for being here tonight. My name is Scott Fritz, I'm with SETSEG. And Matt is with MASB. And we just wanted to come and present the award to Jeff and his staff with, for the program, to help the youth in the summer program, which is phenomenal. And SETSEG and MASB have been partnering for over 25 years. And this is our 25th year of giving this award. And so there was over 300 applicants that had to write in a grant with specific details and requirements to become eligible for the award. So to be one of 25 across the state, about over 300, is a tremendous accomplishment. So we want to say thank you. We have this green sign that Matt is holding, it's a representation, I get to take this one with me, but you will be given an actual same-size, full steel sign that you can hang outside of the school where you would like to. And then also, we have this official award that you can keep as well. And the check is also here that can go on to further fund the program. So thank you for all you do for students, we appreciate all of your hard work, and thanks again. Jeff?
I was elected to speak for the group, so first, thank you both for coming up to present tonight. We are really excited, this is the first time that Midland High School has received this award. But I think it certainly is a tribute to all of the hard work that these folks have put in over the past summer. And I'll say that we're excited and planning for Chemick Challenge 2018. I wasn't going to rehash the program because we had a chance to present to all of you in September, so I know you've heard about it. But again, we're excited and planning for the next Chemick Challenge. So thank you all.
Thank you, Jeff. Can we take a minute and just, if the board has any questions for, or comments for the group?
Jeff, can you just reintroduce the folks with you tonight?
Sure. Actually, Helena McDonald is at the end. Eric Kraus. Fred Dingman. Ryan Wantorsak, here in the middle. Bob Skirfield's one of our assistant principals. This is Connie Stagger, learning coach, and then Anthony Gates, teacher at Midland High.
Very good.
Awesome, you guys.
What a great idea.
Thank you, we appreciate it, thanks so much.
Thanks for all your hard work, and it's wonderful. I can hardly wait for the sign to go up, and I was really excited to see Midland High get this sign, and I look forward to seeing what you guys come up for next year, too. So thanks for all the hard work.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
We'll move right into shining stars here. If Tyler Hubbard would come up and join me. So I'm going to read about Tyler as he makes his way up today. Tyler began his MPS career in 2015. He teaches industrial education classes at Jefferson Middle and HH Dow High Schools. Before coming to MPS, Tyler taught industrial education, technology, and CAD in Chippewa Hills, Greenville, Wakefield, and Bessemer. Tyler earned his Bachelor of Science degree from Central Michigan University in 2008, and his Master's of Science degree in administration, also from CMU, in 2014. Tyler was nominated for a shining star by an MPS parent. Among their comments were the following. "Mr. Hubbard does a fantastic job of keeping his students engaged in interest in vocational education. Two of my three boys have been lucky to have him for a teacher more than once. Both have had his classes this year. They always come home excited about the class, and have gained so much knowledge about designing and building. At the Jefferson Curriculum Night, all the parents decided they wished they could take his classes because they are so interesting. My eighth grader is considering a different career direction because of all he has learned from Mr. Hubbard's classes. Congratulations, Tyler." Tyler has his hands full, I will hold these and then give them to you after you want, if you want to go around.
Congratulations, Tyler.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cassandra Stauffer-Hansen, hopefully I pronounced those right, Cassandra. Let me read a little bit about Cassie. Cassie has been with Midland Public Schools since 2015 as a paraprofessional at Plymouth Elementary School. Before beginning her employment with Midland Public Schools, Cassie was a dedicated, valued parent volunteer. Cassie was nominated for a shining star by MPS staff members who said, "Cassie is an amazing asset to our school. She is in tune with students in a way that makes teachers around her listen carefully. She has a true heart for at-risk children, is able to connect with them in a purposeful, meaningful, helpful, and magic manner. She is truly deserving of this recognition. Miss Cassie is definitely worth the shining star award. She is always working to help students in any way she can to make them feel good about themselves and make sure they have what they need to be successful and stay busy. She is a caring individual who works well with students and teachers. She helped to make recess play safer by requesting tag flags so the students could play games safely." That makes sense if you've seen an elementary playground. She is also working with teachers and students by developing a behavior monitoring intervention tracker for students. She goes above and beyond for Plymouth students and staff. We are lucky to have her as part of our staff. Congratulations, Cassie.
Thank you.
You did so well today. Thank you.
Thank you, Cassie.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Cassie.
And we have another presentation for you, busy night as you know. And we have HH Dow here doing a presentation with about the Charger yearbook and update. And I think Mr. Poole will introduce who he has with him tonight.
Good evening. First off, I want to say, go ahead. Thank you, Mary and Lynn, for making it to our 50th yesterday. I know everybody's busy, but it's been neat to be a part of three different 50 years at the buildings, and actually 175 at Central when I was there. So I know a lot of work and energy goes into that, and I know Jenny Coppins was in charge of it at Dow High School, so I really want to make sure that she knows that, I appreciate that. And it was a lot of work, it was very unique as a history guy to hear Mrs. Clark, Jim Clark's wife, Jim was the first principal at Dow High School, and she gave a great speech on the history of Dow High School. And one of the most unique things was when they were thinking about mascots, and one of the options was the black and blue Bruisers, which I thought would have been hilarious for Dow High School, but we're glad that we're the Chargers. I have the pleasure of introducing Kami Hall, who does not only our yearbook, but also our school newspaper. And we have three fantastic students as well, Ben Zeitler, Regan O'Brien, and Maggie Dooley. So I'm going to turn it over to them, and hopefully you have lots of questions for them, because they're ready for them.
Good evening, thanks for having us here tonight. I'm going to start us off, talking a little bit about the beginning journalism path that the students can take. So the beginning journalism experience is students can be ninth through 12th grade, anybody who's interested in it, and we give a variety of writing, visual components. They get to go out and do photography, design, graphics, you name it. And most of it is the prep for the next level that they may go to, which is to become part of a staff, whether it's yearbook or newspaper, they have a choice from that end of it. And we try to give the kids lots of opportunities to get their work published. The update has an online component, which allows us a lot more freedom to be able to publish the work, even with the beginning journalism students. And then they get a chance to work with the editors and understand what that's like to go through the process. One of the great things that we started a couple of years ago is reviving the literary magazine. And so working with Sarah Hacklick in the English department, and Kirk Gledhill in the Art Department, we called together all different works that students have done throughout the year. And then my students, the beginning students, go through all of that, decide what can be put into the printed edition of the Fragments magazine. And so it's a collection of poems and short stories, narratives, you name it, and then the artwork we try to match with it. So the students get a firsthand look at trying to decide editorial content, what's going to go together, visually appealing designs, and then having to lay it out on pages, meeting deadlines, so that it can get to print in time to get back to us. So that gives them their first printed edition. We've now done two, and we'll be doing our third one this spring here. The other thing that we've started is to do a video news broadcast, so the students get to do two of those in the spring. The first one is a 10-minute package they put together with different video stories, it's all pre-edited, and then sent out to all of the teachers, who then play it during the announcement period. The second one, however, is live. And so the students actually have to be on-air during that particular time, be the anchors, and have to transition between any clips or any video packages that we have, and be prepared for any glitches at the same time as well. So we do two 10-minute broadcasts in the spring for these kids. So this is kind of the introductory look at that end of it. And then, we decided, why stop there? So working with Ted Davis a couple of years ago, they teamed up with the NFHS Network, which houses a lot of video streaming for sports. So I started to work with him, with the kids, to put together sports streaming, and a chance for them to start producing actual sports shows. So what began as a simple camera and graphics kind of setup, has now expanded, thanks to the sports boosters, to actually having two on-air announcers. So these kids get to practice doing play-by-play and commentary, they have to do the research, talk to coaches ahead of time, try to gather the information, work off rosters. So it's been fun, it's been a little crazy with technical stuff, but they're learning and having a great time with it. We've been able to do football games this fall, we focused a lot on basketball because it's an easy setup in the building. And then I have several kids that are now interested in doing baseball, so we're working out the logistics of that in the spring here as well. So that's been kind of the fun part. And then, before I turn it over to these guys to tell you all about the program some more, these are three organizations that we are members of, the Columbia Scholastic Press Association, the National Scholastic Press Association, and the Michigan Interscholastic Press Association. These two bottom ones, the Columbia and the, or CSPA and NSPA, are national programs. And there, we've won several awards. We're being judged against schools all over the US, as well as with CSPA, sometimes in the world. And just recently, CSPA did their crown awards, and the update received another silver crown just on Friday, so, for their work. So it's very exciting to get a chance to compete with other students who are trying to produce newspapers, both print and online. So we do a hybrid, so they're looking at all of those components there as well. And these are some of the photos that we've had from going to these different camps and the conferences here. One of the ones that was a great opportunity is NSPA had one in the fall, they changed their locations, but the one in 2015 was in Disney. And when I said to the kids, "Hey, does anyone want to go to Disney?", 11 of them were like, "Yes!" So we took a trip down to Disney, went to the National Conference down there, it was the largest conference they've ever had, almost 6,500 students from across the nation that were there, and we got to do a lot of workshops and presentations and have some fun, also going to Magic Kingdom. So it was a great time. But I'm going to let these guys who can tell you more about MIPA on that end. So Ben Zeitler, Regan O'Brien.
Hi, I'm Ben Zeitler, I'm a managing sports, managing sports columnist, staff writer, and page designer on the update staff. First, I'll talk about MIPA. I've been to two of the MIPA summer workshops, and both of them were highlights of my summer. In 2016, I took the sports writing class, and Mr. Jim Worley was my instructor. I learned a great deal about not only sports reporting, but also the world of journalism as a whole. And while I was at the camp in 2016, I had a few memorable things that I did in that class. First of all, I attended pro-amateur, a pro-amateur game that featured Miles Bridges, Tom Tum Narin, and a few other prominent basketball players. And we got the opportunity to interview players, and it was a fantastic experience for me, especially as a person who's very enthusiastic about sports. We also played in a volleyball tournament, we watched movies, we played board games, and a lot more that also contributed to the just enjoyment of the camp or the workshop. While I was there, I won the award for the best sports column in 2016, and it was my first-ever column, so that was a testament to the tremendous job that Mr. Worley did in teaching the course, and by extension, the whole workshop. And that was a great help to all the staffers that were a part of the 2016-2017 staff. Most importantly, I made friends that I still keep in touch with to this day, because these camps bring people with common interests together. For instance, I was, I was talking back and forth with a former, a former classmate during the Michigan on Saturday, and we were both Michigan fans, and so when Jordan Poole, our favorite player, hit that shot, we both went crazy. But that just goes to show the bonds you form at a workshop like MIPA. And then in 2017, I took the news editor, editors class with Maggie. And this class focused more on the leadership aspect of being on a newspaper staff. I learned a lot from the, from the class, including how to effectively work a staff writer through the editing process of a story. And I also took what I learned and applied to my leadership in football and basketball, and also in student government. And again, Maggie took the class with me, and she had other experiences that also overlapped with mine, so I'll let her take over.
Hello, my name's Maggie Dooley, I'm the editor-in-chief of the update at Dow High. I don't know if this is working. So as Ben said, we both took the news editors course at the MIPA summer camp. MIPA is a really great workshop, I was only able to go my senior year, but it was a really great opportunity to prepare me for the big challenge ahead. We took the news editors course together to really understand what it is to coach a staff. Our staff was very new this year, all of my managing editors had never been in an editing position before, so this class really set up for the rest of the year. Dean Hume was our advisor, and he is from Ohio, he taught us a ton about the coaching process. He helped us gain news perspective on how to coach staffers, he also helped us with our communication skills. I know that journalism has really helped me with my communication skills, I don't think I'd be able to work through situations as I do now without the journalism program. So MIPA also has a spring conference where we get to celebrate our hard work, and we choose stories and submit them in specific categories. And then in the spring conference, we all go as a staff, as many people that can go, and they tell us if our story's won or not, and that's also when we find out if we got a Spartan Award. So I guess we can transition on to some of the work that we've been doing this year. So as you can see over here, this was my last story from the last cycle, published on March 8th. It was a story about the Midland K-9 unit. There is one Midland K-9 officer, his name is Said, I think I pronounced that a little rough. He, he's one of the dogs that comes and does sniff searches at the high schools. And so a lot of kids are not very informed about what happened, so one of the staffers suggested that we should do an informative piece on, you know, what goes on during sniff searches. So me and another staffer, Cameron McGee, were able to go to the Midland Police Department, and as you can see in that photo, we were able to witness him attacking an officer, like a mock presentation of it, in his bite sleeve. And then also, we got a couple of cute shots of the dog as well. So this is just a great example of all of the opportunities that were provided when we're doing stories. We get to meet people that we probably would never meet, like I said, the police officers, public officials, people we wouldn't encounter if we weren't doing informative pieces on them. And so that has really helped me gain communication skills, and I know a lot of other staffers, they get to learn how to conduct themselves when they're in the presence of an adult that they wouldn't normally meet, and so they're gaining a lot of new skills. Also, we try to connect all of our stories back to the students at Dow High. Talking a little bit of that, our mission statement for the update is, as a public forum for student expression, update will honor the HH Dow High community and the journalist profession by placing truth, accuracy, and objectivity from first, and encouraging all sides to voice their opinions. So that's just a little bit about what we do. We encourage all students to share their voices, we have letters to the editor, we have our update online, where we try to post news rapidly, so that if there's something that happens, since we're only a monthly publication, we can put it right on our website and put a link out on Twitter or social media, which is another thing that we do to communicate news. So I just want to bring it back to Ben, so he can tell you about his last story that he published.
And first of all, Maggie talked a little bit about how we would get the opportunity to talk with people that we normally wouldn't, specifically adults. In fact, I interviewed Dave Marsh, the Northwood Athletic Director, after school today, and we had a great discussion concerning my current story, which is concerning the pros and cons of paying college athletes. And then this year, I've also interviewed a former Michigan player, a former NFL player, and a swimmer who participated in Pan American Games and almost made the Olympics. And the best part of that is that all these really cool athletes were Dow High grads, and I would not have known that without the journalism program. The screenshot here, with the environment keeping it clean, that's the story I did last issue, when I wrote about the Dow High janitors. Students come in each day, and they come into clean classrooms and facilities, but no one really thinks of the people that are behind the scenes putting the effort to make our school look good. And so it is interesting to see a new perspective. And that's what I find coolest about journalism, there's almost always a litany of angles to choose from for each story. And that's especially valuable in today's times, when you see a wide variety of things on the internet, ranging from Fox News to online sites, on online sites, you're not sure what to believe. So as a journalist, it's helped me to see through the things that may not be true, and be able to dig a little bit deeper and verify facts. Another thing that journalism has helped me with was peer interaction and making each other better. As a, as an editor, it's my job to work people through stories and put out the best version of each story possible. And it's nice for teachers to intervene and be able to talk, we get that every day in class, but it's something new to hear it from a person on your own level, and I find it to be more impactful and more influential. And then finally, I would just like to say that my experiences on the Dow High staff have inspired me to want to join a student publication at the collegiate level, I'm not sure where I'll be attending yet, but it's definitely something that I'd like to pursue, so thank you.
Hello, I am Regan O'Brien, and I am the editor-in-chief of the yearbook at Dow High. And similar to Maggie and Ben, I was also able to attend some workshops over the summer. I attended the Herff Jones Yearbook Camp at Grand Valley State University with two other staff members, and we took third place for our theme development, which was It All Started, which we ended up using for the 50th edition for the yearbook coming out this May. And this theme was meant to show where we came from 50 years ago, and the tradition, previous Chargers started for us, and also allude to the journey and the traditions that we are creating today. Over the summer, I also attended the Washington Journalism and Media Conference at George Mason University in Washington DC. It was a week-long program where we got to hear and speak with very respected journalists, including the editor-in-chief of the National Geographic Magazine. And it was an amazing experience, and it really allowed me to hone in on those journalism skills, and even more sparked my interest in being able to tell people stories. But most importantly, being a part of the Dow High yearbook staff has really made a significant impact on my life. Starting on the staff, I was very, very shy, I did not like talking to people, and it pushed me out of my comfort zone immensely, and allowed me to really hone in on my leadership skills and also my communication skills. So it has been an incredible experience, and I cannot thank Kami Hall and the entire staff enough for allowing me to have that experience over these past couple of years. As it says up here, we are a 200-page book and a 30-page supplement, and like I said earlier, this is our 50th anniversary, and after we leave here today, we are going to submit the book to be printed in May. So thank you so much for having us.
Well, we'd like, love to open it up to questions here. I'll open it up to the board, any questions or comments?
Are you all seniors now? Have you decided where you're going to school? Are you going to, I know Ben, I think you said you were going to look at going onto a collegiate newspaper. Any takers, journalism, your?
Well, I meant to say this earlier, but I'm going to be attending Northern Michigan University. I'm going to be looking into legal studies and communication, specifically communication. I wouldn't have gone on this level, I think I would have probably gone something science-related if I hadn't been exposed to journalism. I actually stumbled upon journalism my freshman year, I wanted to get out of Spanish III, so I went into beginning journalism, that was the only other open course. Not a big Spanish speaker. So I, beginning journalism was the only open course, and I was like, you know, this is very interesting. So Kami encouraged me to, you know, continue onto the update staff, and I just, I found that I really like writing, and so I felt that that would be a good profession to go into, you're doing a lot of writing, a lot of research, and legal studies, and then as well, I probably would have never thought about communications, but just the way I interact with people, the way I get to tell stories, hear people's stories, I really wanted to go into something where I could do that. So I'm looking into communication. I'm probably going to try to do a little bit of writing on the side, you know, with clubs and things. And I will be attending Miami University of Ohio, and I'm going on a communication path with a minor in sociology, but I'm also, I really want to get involved in a communication, whether it be their school newspaper or any kind of literary magazine or something like that.
I just wanted to say, too, I can see that you are all risk takers, that you're willing to step out there, out of your comfort zone, and try something new and different. And kudos to Kami as well, for, you know, taking on, and so many different ways that you guys are using the communication to keep people informed, and it's really great, really nice program.
I have a question about, you mentioned a magazine called Fragments, a collection of writings and poetry. You've had two editions now, is that correct?
Yes.
How many people contributed to their first couple of editions? You have a big, a big outreach or a big result?
How many students contributed to it? More than we could put in the magazine.
Awesome.
So, and we also open it up to middle school kids, so we usually try to set aside two pages for their works as well.
for their works as well. So, they do go through a screening process, and some of them are just not of high enough quality, and then, of course, the limited space that we have, that we have had to turn kids down.
Is that distributed with the newspaper on the same kind of cycle, or...
We just do one per year, and it is distributed usually with the senior issue or the last issue of the update in the end of May, so...
Thank you. Sounds great.
Ben, I had to comment that it's really cool that you got to interview all those awesome and amazing athletes, a Pan American swimmer, University of Michigan football player, and an NFL player. I'd have to imagine that if I were to guess, I bet that NFL player was also a CMU Chippewa one time. But I have one correction, you kind of flowed in with that, that Mr. Marsh is not a Dow High graduate. Mr. Marsh is a Midland High graduate. I'm just kidding. He was my neighbor growing up next door to me. But awesome and amazing. Thank you very much for sharing all the interview stories.
Great job. I know you guys spend, you didn't allude to how many hours and hours that you spent, but I know that you're there very late, aren't you, a lot of nights, especially when you're... What do they call it, getting ready to publish or whatever?
Production.
Production, yes.
Kami will be heading back there.
Well, and that's why, yeah, Reagan, you said that, that yes, you guys were going back, so thank you all for your commitment. I always love reading the newspaper, so...
It's a very quality publication, and yes, we all look forward to it when Cindy delivers them to us.
Did you know that? We get them every month, so yes, if you did not know that.
We sent you.
I was gonna say.
And I wasn't aware that you had an online version, and you were also on social media as well, so I'll look for that and keep up the great work. It's just wonderful to see and feel your excitement about journalism and about education at Dow High, and I'm so glad you were able to come out here and share that with us as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next on the agenda, we have item 3.4 for information. We have Classroom and Special Education Realignment Plans. Mr. Sherrill?
Yep, so, a little bit hard to see on the screen, but I did send that, and each of you have that document in front of you, so to try to not take too much time tonight, but I need to give you a little background on this. So, almost five years ago, I arrived in the district, and as I went around to learn about the district, every building, it became somewhat evident to me, particularly at Seabird Elementary, where we knew we had some issues of overcrowding in classroom space, placement of special education programs or high-needs students. And with Seabird and the consolidation, it seemed like we just placed programs wherever we found the open space, and so, that happened throughout the district. And we had overloaded programs in certain areas, we had higher enrollments in certain areas, and then when we decided to build Central Park, we've kind of had the same issue going forward, where we now have about a 70% at-risk population at Central Park, 70% of a large number, about 800 students as well. And so, for the last two years, the elementary principals and I have taken a look at reconfiguration and what we'd call balancing out that at-risk population special needs program, and then maybe alignment as well. And so, some programs were crossing town at different times, they were leaving their peer groups, and so, we kind of balked away from it last year. It was a difficult problem that we weren't really seeing a solution to. And then this year, when we decided to open Carpenter in the fall of 18, it will open up four classroom spaces with the two young fives and the two four-year-old programs moving into that building. And so, we decided to take one more shot, knowing that we had four classroom spaces and how might that configure out. So, in front of you, we have what we believe would be a balancing out and alignment of the majority of the programs in the district. Now, I need to be mindful as well to tell you that we don't have just MPS programs, but we also have ISD-sponsored programs in our buildings. And so, that's a rental basis, they move in the facilities, and they probably have had the worst alignment throughout the time because they were placed at many different places and often moved around with the consolidation of five elementary schools, the consolidation and closing of Central Intermediate School. We really don't have too much of this problem at the high school. We have plenty of classroom space going forward. Then, the last piece I need to add to that is because the elementary enrollment has either been stable or up, it was presumed when you consolidated that our elementary enrollment would continue to go down. It has not, thankfully, but it has caused some issues into this problem as well. And as you know, we added additional classroom onto Woodcrest, for example. We do have an ongoing problem to the north. We know the amount of students who are now being housed north of I-10, and the Larkin Township area is an issue for us. It has made Woodcrest and Seabird vulnerable, and so, this is one piece of the puzzle that would alleviate some of that crowding, but you certainly probably have a little more work left to do on it, I won't kid you on that. I think we probably have a little bit of rezoning we're gonna have to do at some point as that continued growth in Larkin Township happens. So, we think we came up with a pretty good plan, but I do think there's some people here that's gonna talk to you tonight that maybe will tell you different. We do have some parents with the ESA autistic program that is housed at Central Park who do not feel this is a real good plan. They'll explain that to you a little later, I think. But I wanted to hear for information. I sent it to you in the Friday letter. You got the background verbally, and we'll hear from them a little later on as we go.
Okay, very good. Appreciate your communications and charts. Okay, now we will go to item 3.4 for action.
No, no action on that one. That was just for information for...
Oh, I'm sorry, 3.5 for action.
That one will be a roll call when you get to it.
Okay. We have the Regional Enhancement Millage Renewal Resolution adoption.
Can I talk about it or just...
And are you, did you want to talk about it, or shall I just read it?
I can talk about it. I was gonna wait to see if you had a motion and acceptance and the discussion, but I can do that now. So, nine years ago, the county came out and asked for an enhancement millage. It's one of the only ways left for school districts to ask locals to support funding for schools. And so, it is regional. It is the four public school districts in Midland County, and with new recent legislation, it also includes public charter schools, and we have two that sit in our boundary. They'll be receiving funds out of this as well, smaller, but funds out of this as well. And so, that was nine years ago, the superintendents, and it comes to the ISD, so the money flows the ISD out to the four publics. They do not get any of the funding, but they have to call for the election, and so, it's an ISD election. And my first seven, eight months on the job, we renewed it, and we are near that timeline to renew it again. And so, we would like to have it on the August ballot at that time. It would give us an opportunity, if we weren't successful, to come back one more time before you would stop collecting funds on this. It's brought in, brought us over a million dollars per year, if you can imagine what would occur if we lost that million dollars. In the past, we have tried to list items that we would use the funds for. There is no statutory language that says that you must do those things, but we kind of wanted to make sure voters knew when we do it, so we have kind of blocked those funds and showed that we would use those. Things like textbook purchases, curriculum purchases, and we've listed buses before. Well, as you note, the bond, buses would not be an item that would need to be needed for the next, I believe, don't hold me exact years, 10 years, going out on the bond issue. So, I have thought on this. With the, certainly our recent upgrades to security, we've moved forward with Sally Port entries and surveillance cameras and card access, but there's probably more to be done with alert systems as well as maybe resource officers. And so, we were fortunate that City of Midland funds us two. We thank them very much for that, our two high schools. But I think in the perfect world, if we could get an additional two, we covered our four secondary buildings as the primary, and each of those four officers rotated through our elementaries. Two of those elementaries sitting right next to the middle school makes that job a little easier. Certainly, the threat of an officer in that building assist, as well as they often put out many fires before they get there, and of course, the response if we had an emergency would be so much quicker with them in our building. So, something we can talk about, and I would like to talk about that, it's not for tonight as far as adding that as a proposal. We can bring that through our committee structures and up to the full board for discussion. But it is time to renew. We are looking for you to make that motion to renew that. So, the ESA has those responses back, the four locals have to take action, and then they take their final action to put it on the ballot for us.
Thank you. Well, then, at this time, I would entertain a motion for item 3.5.
I'll make the motion. I move to approve the resolution to place a regional enhancement millage renewal question before the voters, and a special action will be held on Tuesday, August 7th, 2018, requesting that the Midland County Educational Service Agency, ISD, submit a renewal proposal for 1.5 mills for five years, 2019 through 2023, inclusive, in accordance with Section 705 of the Revised School Code. A complete copy of the resolution shall be attached to the original of these minutes.
Support. Okay, motion by McFarland, support by Branstad. All in favor? Say aye. Oh, sorry. Roll call vote.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Discussion, thank you. Out of practice. Okay, is there, one thing I was wanting to add to your discussion on it, Mike, was I think as well, it would be wonderful to have the resource officers on those campuses creating relationships, positive relationships with the kids as well. I think that's something we've seen in the high schools has been very beneficial, and I think we saw that in the middle schools and even in the elementary schools. It would go a long way.
Yep, they certainly proactively take care of the situations before they ever grow and they build those relationships with the kids.
Well, I mean, I just want to say that, so this will be the third time, and just to reiterate that this is just a renewal and that it has to be done countywide. It's not something that Midland Public, this is, you know, if we're gonna go forth and it wasn't a bond and it wasn't a sinking fund, that this is our option. We do it as a whole, and the money comes back into our district. I think it's based on headcount, if I remember, or something.
Correct.
Yeah, so...
Approximately 72% of the county population, and so, we would get 72% of those funds.
All right, that was my only comment.
That's a good comment.
Not an increase.
No, not an increase, and so, this will be the third time we've had it now for almost 10 years, and it's definitely been, you know, needed. You know, we've gone through some really challenging times, and so, I hope that the voters will once again support it, because it's critical to the functioning of our schools.
Right, and we'll work hard to get the word out and make sure that our community understands the importance of this, and with us being the larger district, to really take the lead on that.
We always do.
Yeah, as Mike knows.
I put some miles on.
Okay, if there's no more discussion, then we'll move into a roll call vote.
Okay. President Singer?
Aye.
Vice President Branstad?
Aye.
Treasurer Frazee?
Aye.
Member Blazey?
Aye.
Member Friddell?
Aye.
I also vote yes. We have six yes votes for the record and one absent.
Thank you, Mr. McFarland. Now, we'll move into item 3.6 for action. We have the 2018-19 school year calendar. Mr. Sherrill?
So, as you may know, the school calendar is a negotiated item. It is a work condition for our employees, with our teachers, and so, we work through that each year. Relatively smooth process this year. Mr. Rootin and Mr. Cooper said on that from the district representatives, and a few short meetings, we came up with two options of a school calendar, and the employee, the district teachers voted on that, and you have the final option in front of you, which we were okay with either option. Couple of things for us that we always want to make sure we do well in there is PD, and we try to keep the half-days down to a minimum for the benefit of our parents. So, an additional change in that calendar would be spring break a week earlier. That's been driven by state testing. The feedback from our administrative group for a couple of years is they would prefer not to come back from spring break and go right into testing, and this would allow a one-week buffer before the students would go into testing. And so, we have that calendar in front of you. Some of those vacation dates, start dates are county-wide, set by us, and at this point, we still don't have a waiver, nor could we probably handle a waiver to start pre-Labor Day because of all of our construction work. We couldn't afford to lose a week of work, or else it would cost you significantly more funds. We're looking for a motion for approval of the calendar.
I move, we approve item 3.6, which is the 2018-19 school year calendar.
Support.
Move by Angela, support by Mary. All in favor?
Wait, I have a question.
Okay.
So, just, so I have an understanding. What did change? Because this seems like school is getting out a lot earlier than it has the last two years. I mean, I think that there'll be a lot of people overjoyed when they see this, but, you know, knowing the 180 days that really impacted a couple of years ago, us going so late, is there anything significant that...
Brian and Bob can jump in here, but it's predominantly PD and record day-driven.
Okay.
Yeah, Mike, that was entirely accurate. It was the front-loading of our PD more than we've ever done before.
Okay.
We have 12 hours of PD before school starts, and historically, we don't have that, and that allowed us to move the start date to the first week of June, where historically, we've been in the second week of June.
Right.
Also, with the reduction of half-days that we have, that afforded us the ability to make those changes as well.
Great, thank you. Because that's quite often a question that we get asked, you know, out in the community, why is school going so late? So, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor of item 3.6? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? And the ayes have it. Moving into item 3.7 for action, we have two student expulsions. Ms. Gray?
Yep, I bring a board subcommittee of three board members, Superintendent Sherrill, myself, administrator, parents, and student, met on February 13th at 2:00 for Student A and at 2:30 for Student B. Student A is being recommended for expulsion for the remainder of the 17-18 school year. It is the committee's recommendation that Student A serve the expulsion. The student does have the opportunity to utilize the PAST program at the community center, and actually is going to also the online learning through the PASTs program. Student A can apply for reinstatement over the summer for the start of the 18-19 school year, and this action requires a roll call vote from the board.
Okay. All accepting motion for item 3.7.1.
Move to approve 3.7.1.
Move by McFarland, support by Frazee.
Okay.
And any comments or questions?
I'll just add a quick one for you. So, the law's changed, and so, you're seeing these more formally done in front of you as a board. We bring it through the committee to get out the closed session, because the personal identification of the student and the information is protected, and then we bring it to the full board for your action. It'll be the same when they return, they come back, the petition, that goes in front of the committee, a little broader committee, actually, it's required to have some parents and some other representatives on that committee. They make a recommendation back to you to return them. So, you're seeing a few more of these, but I must also say, we are seeing a few more expulsions, particularly at the middle school levels, and that is probably going to drive us to look at maybe some more intervention-style programs and see what's occurring while we're seeing these, type of issues occurring in the schools.
Okay, next, Student B is also being recommended for...
We need to do the roll call.
I'm sorry, I jumped all over your roll call there.
Is it a collective vote or...
No, we gotta do it individually.
Okay. President Singer?
Aye.
Vice President Branstad?
Aye.
Treasurer Frazee?
Aye.
Member Blazey?
Aye.
Member Friddell?
Aye.
I also vote yes. Six yes votes, one absent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Student B is also being recommended for expulsion for the remainder of the 17-18 school year. It is the committee's recommendation that Student B serve the expulsion. The student does have the opportunity to use online learning through the PAST program and additional instructional support. Student B can reapply for reinstatement over the summer for the start of the 18-19 school year, and this action also requires roll call from the board.
Okay, make a motion for... So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? And we'll move into a roll call vote.
Okay. President Singer?
Aye.
Vice President Branstad?
Aye.
Treasurer Frazee?
Aye.
Member Blazey?
Aye.
Member Friddell?
Aye.
I also vote yes. Six yes votes, one absent.
Great, thank you. It's wonderful to have the PASTs program and the PASTs program and online learning opportunities as well. Okay, now we will move into item 3.8 for action. We have copiers printers across the district. Mr. Cooper?
Yes. First item I do have for you are the copiers and printers across the district. Should say the long-awaited copiers and printers across the district. Should say the long-awaited copiers and printers across the district. Everybody's been waiting for this. It's a rather complicated proposal, but it has 87 printers or copiers, one and the same, that are manageable and have the ability to handle our faxing needs also. So, manageable means, for example, you can put it in to be printed, but until you arrive at a machine, anyone in the district, it does not print. So, it gives you that manageability to go to any one of many printers, and it's just waiting there for you to come in and ID your way in. We looked at it. It's really a five-year. It's very typical. We have leased in the past. We've talked to you about when the bond came, that we would buy the devices. The complicated part always is, it's really two parts always. There's the devices themselves, but the maintenance agreement really goes with it. So, you got to look at both, and you saw that in the bid tab. And of course, which products are offered and what their maintenance looks like requires quite a bit of truing things up, so you're comparing apples to apples. We are recommending that the technology team and the administration, the low bidder, Michigan Office Solutions, Grand Rapids, Michigan, the five-year cost, $884,000, almost $885,000. What I'm really looking for tonight is that first part, which is the devices, which are paid for by the bond. That is $462,370. The maintenance agreement comes out of general fund, it's paid on an annual basis, and you can see that's $422,596.48, roughly $85,000 a year. They do estimate it. We give them those numbers to start with based on our previous history of, you know, how many copies we made over the last few years, and they use that as part of their bid when we go there. So, what we're seeking at this time is the approval to go with Michigan Office Solutions for $462,370 for the purchase of printer and copy replacements. Dave Deeseck's here tonight if you have specific questions, but that's our proposal.
Very good. All accept a motion for item 3.8.
All right, I move, we approve item 3.8, which is the purchase of printers and copiers.
Support.
Move by Angela, support by Patrick. Is there any discussion?
I guess, like Bob said, this has been on the agenda. A lot of discussion's been around this for a long time. So, glad to see that we're to this point now.
Yeah, it was low bid.
It was low bid? Yeah. We went over to FFO. I know there was a bidder that had a nice bid, but it didn't meet all of our specs, so that didn't work out so well. But this is also a provider that we were using, so...
It's the one that we currently use, and had very good, especially on the maintenance side, because if you remember, that's been the bigger issue on the lease. We started with one company with the lease. They stepped in, helped us tremendously on the lease, but their service part, which is important to us, they've been very good.
Okay, I'll open it up for a vote. All in favor of item 3.8? Say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Move on to 3.9?
Mm-hmm.
Kind of kind of roll here. I got three of them, I think. 3.9 is the Woodcrest Makerspace furniture purchase. I know it's a little bit like a broken record, but as we do the elementary schools, I've been coming to you with usually first the cafeterias, because they're the first things that get completed. We're going to try to get a little bit ahead of that, because they've actually moved a little faster on some of those things, so some of the furniture there, but then we usually file up the media center and then the Makerspace. Even, it seems like we don't have a Makerspace at Woodcrest yet. If I don't order furniture now, the wait time and the lead time on all this is relatively lengthy always, and especially when you get into summer, when everyone else is ordering furniture, it even goes longer than that. So, this would get it here on time for us to do this. Files the same process we file at other places. It's with Great Lakes Furniture Supply Company of Hallow, Michigan. It's $33,607. Almost exactly the same as the Plymouth one. It's slightly higher, a little bit to do with one extra storage unit, and I think it was four stools and one chair, if I remember correctly, but it's close how they are, so relatively close to that amount. And again, very similar setups in all the buildings as far as what Makerspaces are going to look like. So, the furniture's coming in very much the same. Once in a while, there's a slight difference in just where that Makerspace is going to go, a little bit of the setup, so it can vary slightly, but that's where we stand. So, that's our recommendation for Woodcrest Makerspace.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve item 3.9.
Support.
Move by Mr. Frazee, support by Mr. McFarland. Is there any discussion? It's exciting to get that Makerspace furniture. We've seen it several times now, and it's very high-quality, comfortable. It looks fabulous, so I'm excited about that. I know Woodcrest will be excited as well. So, we'll move into a vote. All in favor of item 3.9? Say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous.
3.10. We have for you, something that doesn't come along very often, but it's the Dahai pool. They have to be resurfaced as part of the ongoing maintenance of a pool. The Marsite, you see there's really just the recoding, the plastering of the pool. We did put that out to bid. We are recommending that we go with Advanced Pool Services of Milford, Michigan, for a total of $33,000. If you looked at the bid tab on that one, they're quite a bit less than the other two. We did a lot of checking on references with that to make sure we're good and we feel comfortable there. We will work it in. I mentioned in there in July, as you know, we got a couple of things going on at Dahai, like a transformer we got to get changed, and of course, their athletic teams don't want to be waiting around for us either, so, you know, nobody wants the pool done anytime, but you have to empty the water out to recode it. It's got to sit for a bit, so we're trying to squeeze it in there. So, while you'll be approving this now, and we have to to get them on our schedule, the actual cost will not go out until the next budget year.
Okay. All right. So, I move, we approve item 3.10, which is the Dahai pool repair.
Support.
Move by Angela, support by Mary. Is there any discussion?
Thanks for all your work vetting this company. Appreciate it.
Is this just general fund money, or is it bond money?
No, it'd be general fund.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Then we'll move into a vote. All in favor of item 3.10? Say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Item 3.11 for action, we have the 2017-18 budget adjustments by Mr. Cooper.
Okay, as you know, every time during the course of the year, we start with the school budget that you adopt back in June, and as you know, school budgets are not advisory in nature like most people think of budgets. It's more just the reporting of where's our income coming from and how are we using those, that income, because they're public funds. And when either we get a change in the revenue coming in or expenditures going out, we make adjustments. So, the typical pattern is about mid-year, which we're right about that point, we'll make an adjustment, and then we'll do it again in June, and I'll remind you when I get to the timeframe how that works. So, we're just following a typical pattern there. All right, so I just want to remind you of the timeline, because it sneaks up on us real quick, and I think sometimes school budgets follow a calendar that seems a little strange, because everything happens just a little earlier than you think it should, but it's what we have to do by state law. We're at our mid-year budget revision right now. It's really just amending the budget. You're not re-adopting it. You have a budget. You're just amending it on the changes that have happened. Wanted to remind you that next month, on April 16, we do the workshop. Really, it's a chance to kind of let you know what I know about state funding and other factors that are going to affect that budget that I'm going to present to you in June, and that's typical too. So, sometimes we know quite a bit about the state. Sometimes we have our student enrollment. We know a little bit about medical. We can tell you some things about what employee costs are going to be and those kinds of things, and we do that at the budget workshop. It's actually June 11. Remember, you have two board meetings in June. The one on the 11th is when you get the proposed 2018-19 budget, and then when we follow up on June 25, you're going to approve the final amendment to this year's budget, and then you're also going to adopt the 18-19 budget. And one of the reasons you have adjustments is for the very reason, as you guys know, when we put that budget together last June, when we started this one, we hadn't finished the audit. We were closing out accounts as we go. So, there's always a budget variance at the end, where we've asked everybody, you're going to spend it, yep, they are, and then when we get to the very end, they haven't spent as much, which, you know, it's just the timing of how that goes, and so the adjustment brings us back in line. All right, kind of major factors that affect the budget adjustments that I'm about to show you tonight, and these are typically things that don't change much year to year, so I just wanted to show you. Student enrollment is always a big thing. Mike mentioned it earlier. When enrollment stays up, it's a good thing, because it is funded on a per pupil basis. So, student enrollment, we budgeted for 7,629 students, based on our consultant and where he thought we should be. The blended count actually came in at 7689, which is up 60 above the estimate that we had, that we started our budget with, so that's a good thing. We're not up 60 students, and I want to say that. We're up 60 from the budgeted number. I would guess we're within one or two of where we were last year, if not exactly dead on. Okay, so, just so you take it that way. Another thing that happens is, many times when we're doing everything in June, there's a lot of volatility and timing in that state funding. I can't tell you everything, because it hasn't been decided. We're taking our best guess when we're there, because you don't know what version's going to be there. I would tell you that this year, that wasn't true. I had a lot of information for you. The one thing that I didn't have as much, and you're going to see it here at adjustment time, is what I call either categorical or grant funding. You just don't know. And so, for example, we got a STEM grant in the middle of all this. Or, if you remember, we were talking a lot about 31A money, which we kind of knew was coming. We didn't know much, so we didn't put it in the budget. Typically, grant and any categoricals have the same related expenditure as it does income. In other words, they're telling me what I can spend that on, and I have to spend it. Sometimes I can use something called carryover on some things, which means the state does let you, or the federal government, carryover some funds. That plays a factor too, because you never know that until the end of their fiscal year, which is a little bit different than ours. So, carryover can be a factor. Look, revenue factors, it's getting much better with the PPT, but the PPT is so new, and if you know much about that personal property tax, it's not a phase-in process as to what you can claim as personal property taxes, so we're getting a better feel for what that means. The state makes up what we lose in our hold harmless collection. Other districts, if you had a bond before 2013, the state also helps you on making of that, but we're not in that, and anyone that got a bond after 2013 is. We're kind of unique in that we get it for our hold harmless millage. It's an interesting thing, because it's one agency doling out that money. So far, we've gotten everything that we've ever missed. That's not a guarantee. I mean, that organization has X amount of dollars, and as long as they can fund us, they will, but I'm not here to tell you there's a day that that wouldn't happen. We also have some developmental zones that sometimes play an interesting part, even confuse the city who puts them out there sometimes as to should they be collecting, or do we have to refund that part back? They have things that are captured, where they give us the actual money, and we have to turn right around and pay it back to the city. So, that happens sometimes. We do have changes in special services, both on the revenue and expenditure side, including a funding we receive through the ESA. Sometimes it's because the special services funding is based on the year before, so you're always going to have adjustments the following year, one way or the other, because they're using the year before to tell you how much funding you get in the current year, and of course, once they know where you ended up in the current year, they come back and make an adjustment. And we do have budget variances. I try to always be real conservative and tell you the budget variance at the end's going to be 1%. I've seen it as high as 3 the time I've been doing it. That's kind of rare. Usually kind of comes somewhere around 2, but I can't guarantee that, so I'd much rather you make decisions based on a smaller variance. If it works out at the end, that's good. That can help you for the next budget, so try to do that as we go. Oops, there we go. So, major revenue changes, and I listed a few more than I normally would. Just I wanted to show you the difference in grant funding here. The actual total revenue changes from when we had the original budget is $3,260,950. When you look up there, I want to just point out one thing real quick on this and the next slide. Any of them that have a C at the end means that it has a related expenditure going out the backside. Those are grants that are earmarked for something. But if you start from that very first amount that you see up there, state funding increases, it comes in different sections, but a lot of that's due to our additional 60 students that we didn't have. A little, some of it's PPT, but a lot of it is we had 60 more students that we got money for. Remember also, though, that sometimes that raise in state funding is a drop in loco, because you only get to collect so much per student, and so they'll balance themselves off. MIPSers is the teacher retirement system. A is basically used for current costs that's given to the district to help offset, so the fund only goes up so high percentage-wise. I'll give that to you. This year, there was a part 1 and 2. 2 was offsetting the state retirement systems, resetting its return rate that they're projecting, and so they added some funding to kind of hold districts harmless as they do that. I think the feeling is generally that they projected a higher rate of return, meets the drop of percent. They're doing it over a couple of years, and they're kind of funding this so that we don't have to bear the burden of them shifting that rate of return that they expect. The other thing we didn't know last year was that they were going to give us some funding for high school students, which they did, so much per student. You can see it there. That's one, and I don't normally put the next one on there. Interest, much better, because typically the interest for the whole year hasn't amounted to anything, you know, it's $3,000 or $4,000, and interest is just up. There was no way to predict that, but we're doing a lot better even there, so that's a good thing. After that, like the Section 24, those are the kids that are court placed. Again, that's always based on the year before, so you see a negative there. That's the adjustment. If you have fewer kids, in actuality, they adjust it. It's always off a little bit. Everything you see after that, the 147C is a rate cap. There's a part 1 and 2 there. If it comes in, it goes back out, but it is a pretty big chunk of money. 31A risk, big. Federal grants, don't forget on the federal grants too, there's some carryover there. We got a little more money from the ESA in a transfer. Again, that's restricted, so it's got a C after it. We went to the Great Start Writing Program. We really didn't know much about that until October and November-ish, and so that's in there. We got the STEM grant that we went in for for $89,000. We had an early literacy grant a year ago, but it came in a little higher this year, and we had carryover. We didn't spend it all last year, so they let us carry that over. We have IDA. If you remember, that's a bedroom money for special ed, and if you remember, a year ago, we did talk to you a little bit about, we were providing some services for the parochials, which federally, we should have had money passed through to us to do that, and now it's coming through to us to do that. The TRIC grants, a little bit of technology money, that was left. We didn't know if we had any of that this year. We thought we'd spend it all, but there's a little bit there, and the same with the adaptive task, which is the state gives. So, again, 3.2, 3.3 in revenue. We go to the expenses, certainly not as many, but still, you can see that the total expenses, the net is $2,184,525. A couple of things that I'll point out to you, we have had, it's been an interesting year this way, but non-budgeted expenses. As you remember, the summer started with digging a lot of trenches out Dahai to find a power cord, and we've had a few things along the way that we just weren't, not expenses that you would expect. We had the early flooding, which, you know, places covered, but we also, you know, whether it be a manhole or it be something else along the way, so we had some there. That increased about $195. The nice thing there, well, nice or not, we were able to offset that, because natural gas, we've been getting some pretty good prices on that, and the same with fuel, so we have not had to, you know, earmark any extra money for that. We had $195, but we've offset that. While I'm at that, I want to mention too that one other thing that I did at this budget adjustment time is, I did do a transfer of money. We do have out there, and we've talked about it here, and you've actually approved it. We have a transformer that's going to be pretty costly, Dahai, that's going to be done in July. So, I have these costs coming up that we all know are going to come in July, next budget year, and so what I'm trying to do is, I made a transfer to the capital improvement fund, and that transfer then will cover those, so that now, and you'll see it doesn't really hurt where we're at, it puts that money aside so that we know the transformer's covered without having to take that out of what we back, what would be considered the general fund. So, I'm transferring over, PRME is what we used to call it, but it's the capital improvement fund that's there. There's that. The pool will actually shift over there. It's coming from here into that one. I'd like to do the radios that way. Remember, we've talked a lot about the radios. First, when we get into it, the state police don't have their grant anymore, of course, or I mean, I guess, but this way, I put enough money over that'll help us maybe do all the radios at one time, so we're not dragging it out over time to try to afford that. And also, as you know, we've been doing some work at Carpenter, and some of that work will go over into the next one. So, there is a transfer in there. Wouldn't show up in the expenditures, but transferred aside, so we have some of that money in the capital improvement fund. Like I told you, most of what you're going to see under the... Like I told you, most of what you're going to see under the expense side, all has letter C in it, which you can tie right back to the revenue that I showed you. It came in and has to go back out the other way. I don't want to make it sound like they tell us exactly what to do. Brian had to sit down with the 31A at-risk money, come up with how we want to spend it, but there are some restrictions on where you spend grant money at, and it has to be used in certain ways. But you get an idea of how the money's going back out the other way, all the way through. So, again, take it to the general fund snapshot then. So, the first column that you see is our original budget in June. All right? So, the first thing that you're seeing is where we were when we adopted 1718. Now, the one thing I want to point out about that, and I'll get to the second column of this in red, the one thing I want to point out about it is that, remember that what you approved in 1718 was before the audit came in. Right? So, some people glance right away and say, oh, you were at 17%. If you notice the bottom, you want to know what your fund balance is percent of expenditures, and it's jumped to 20.7. Well, in actuality, when the audit came in, we had much bigger variance than we thought. So, where we started off in June, expecting it to be about 11.6 million starting point, was really 13.8. So, you had a head start at 2.3 million. The fund balance was that much higher when we started. Never gets reflected till now. So, I just want you to know that, that part of that is when that audit comes in, you had a little better fund balance. You'll see, if you add on that $3,260,000, you're around 82.4 million for revenues, about 80.4 for the new expenditures. And again, you can see those months out there. So, that, of course, subtract those two, your surplus is going to be up about 1.9, just shy of 2 million there. We hope to have a budget variance. I did a 1% of expenditures. Could be higher. It just depends, but we're going to be conservative on that estimate. So, you can see our surplus will be 2.7, really about 2.8 million. And you can kind of see where we're anticipating, at least right now with the March budget, where we'll be, and that is 20.7% of our expenditures. Couple of things to caution you on there. That's 20.7% of all our fund balance that way. Don't forget that there are monies placed in the fund balance, one of two things. We have restricted it in the sense of it was given to us to use for specific purposes. You cannot use it for anything except, in this case, STEM is the biggest part of it. You've also, not that we can't use it, but you've also siloed some money. You've just reserved it. You did that. We started last year, we talked about it, on printers, for example. And we put a little bit of money aside so that if you do this right over five years, if you didn't have a bond to come back to and you needed to get the printers next time, you'd have some money set aside. Doesn't mean you can't spend it for other things, but you've kind of set it aside, just reserved it a little bit there. So, I would take a guess at the unrestricted fund balance being more in the range of 19. something there. So, it's more like at least a percent less than that. When you look ahead, again, and we'll talk again when we talk for the new budget and finishing up this budget, it's the same thing. We do have our balance, our budget process. Wanted you to know we already started. We meet with every building. We've done elementaries, except for maybe one. We've done the middle schools. We do high schools this week and the other elementary, and we do all the big departments. And we have them come in and talk about how they would like to see their money spent, and we try to put a big picture together and share that with the agenda team, and eventually back, it's, we've been holding them pretty steady. So, there hasn't been a whole lot to talk about because we've kind of held them more there at. As you know, the vast majority of our expenditures are always in personnel. We're a personnel-heavy business. That's what we do. Student enrollment, we do not have any consultant numbers back yet, but it's always a biggie when you look at budgets. What do we expect there? Are we going to stay the same? We're going to lose some kids? State funding, you always hear the governors first, and lately, it's been the most joyous, you know, the best one. By the time the House and Senate get done, it changes. For us, it just depends on, they can take money from the foundation allowance and move it over to categorical, can be a bad thing for us sometimes because they can make the foundation allowance go up, but then the categoricals take it away another place. So, it looks like you're getting more per student by the time you work it out, you're not, or it click them out fairly well. So, it's always hard to know. Governor's the only one out there so far, but it shouldn't be too long before at least the House, the Senate, one of them releases their version, and then, of course, it's got to go back in a committee, and they have to work out that, different parts that they accept. So, the other part, personnel costs. Our staffing levels make a difference, the salaries. We do know that a lot of our salaries, in fact, the vast majority, are tied into the fund balance, the way it's trending. I'll be able to tell you at the budget adjustment where we think that's going to come at, which should be the higher level that we talked with each group. So, that's a very good thing for the people that have worked very hard for us. Categories, you know, when people are making steps again because they were froze, they're switching lanes, as we call it when they've added degrees. Those things make a difference. Retirement, what the state does there, if they ever took away the 147 money, that would be a bit of a troublesome thing. Same with medical. We've had a long run with medical. With Mesa, it's been 18 months. We will have, in the middle of this next budget year, a change of some kind. The question is, is it an 18 months worth of buildup? And, you know, half the year, we're going to get a higher raise. Hard to know. So, we'll talk about that. The ESA transfers, there's Act 18, and even the enhancement mileage. Mike's exactly right on that. If that was not there, that's a pretty big chunk of money that would really have an effect on our budget. We'd have to sit there. And of course, the available fund balance. It was very good to us and got us through the lean years. I think we're doing a good job getting it built back up. You don't just keep building forever, but by the same token, you got to remember that there's a reason for putting that together and having it there so that you can get through the times that aren't so good. And I just honestly, the state funding, everybody thinks it could be not too bad a year. This year, a lot of stories out there that after this year, which has to be an election year, after this year, might not be so good. So, just keep that in mind. Like always, what we need you to do at amendment time is just to take a vote. Doesn't have to be a roll call vote, just to amend your adopted budget with the changes that I showed you in revenue and expenditures. We do always make it available online, and it also has a spot on our transparency website. Every time you make an amendment, that goes on there too. If I had to answer any questions, or you can go ahead and make a motion to amend that budget.
We'll do the motion, and then we'll ask questions afterwards. So, I entertain a motion.
I move we approve item 3.11, which is the 2017-18 budget adjustment.
Support.
Moved by Angela, support by Patrick, and we'll open it up to questions or comments.
Bob, allow you to sleep with numbers. Come on now.
I mean, I do just want to say, I mean, it is very evident how important our student headcount is. So many numbers are factored into that. So, all of the things that we continue to do to try to make sure that our district is a district of choice is working, is evidenced by our study.
Three positive motions in budgets, school budgets, when you build them, it's FT, but it's also number employees, FT the other way, number employees you have. And the third factor is always things like bonds, which allow you to not purchase through there.
Right.
But Bob cautioned you very much so that lien payments are common. There's no doubt when you talk to legislators that the school aid fund will stay healthy, but the general fund will not due to some of the tax breaks and different things they've done. And so, those are coming. Don't expect school aid fund to continue to carry you. In fact, this year, when the governor announced 12240, I've already heard 100 at best for us, districts who receive the lower amount. So, even this year, it'll be a nice amount, but it won't be certainly what we were thinking going forward. And then certainly with the bond funds, we have to plan for the day that they're no longer here, and we have lots of capital improvement projects beyond that as well. And so, there's employee compensation, there's new programming, and there's taking care of facilities that should come out of a general fund instead of always doing it the way we've been doing it lately, which is through a bond.
That capital fund is so important to us, and it's important that we put that money away for things like the transformer issue we had at Dow, and we just never know what's going to happen. So, I think that's very important. And then, as the other thing you mentioned, siloing money and putting it aside for things like printers in the future, I think that's a smart move, and we need to be cognizant of what is going to come at us in the future, and I think that's a good way for us to plan for the future and make sure we have that money there so we can deal with those issues when they come to us.
If I could also, it'd be remiss if I didn't say that one of the reasons you have big variances is because I think everybody in the district takes that seriously. So, you would not have a variance at the end if people were just spending to say, hey, I got that much money, I got to get rid of it. That means every employee's kind of doing their part. I guess I also would want to thank the business office, Lori Holderby and stuff there. They really keep track of all the details. It's, I got the easy part presented. They're the ones that are back there with the auditors and everybody pushing out to find details. So, I just didn't want to forget the people that helped us in the process to get to where we are.
I appreciate the interest in your slide presentation and to see such a nice, large number there for interest, and that means someone's really focusing on making the most of our investment and our money. Also, the natural gas is a plus. I know we can't count on that every year, but it sure has.
Thank you, Brian.
Maybe.
But natural gas prices have really helped us out, and we can't count on that in the future, but it sure has been nice this year.
So, I have fuel, diesel, and gas. I've made a difference.
Yeah, we burn a lot of diesel, so make sure you include that in there.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll move into a vote. All in favor of item 3.11, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And it passes. It was unanimous. All right, now, we are moving into item 4, which is request to address the board, and I believe we have a few people here tonight. If when you come up, you could state your name and address and let us know.
The first one's Patty. She's not local. I don't think you are, Patty. Correct me if I'm wrong. So, she's here for a little different purpose, so you don't have to do that.
There you go.
I'm afraid to touch it.
Yeah.
I can either use my big voice, or I can try to do it this way. All that budget talk, let's talk about something that's free. Free, free. That's the big word that you need to take away from this, my little presentation tonight. Free, fast, effective, confidential, and neutral are the five things of the Michigan Special Education Mediation Program. I am one of four outreach representatives in the state, and my area covers from Grand Rapids to Traverse City to Alpena, back through Saginaw, the whole thumb, and back across over to Lansing. So, you are in my area, you lucky people. I want to start at the beginning and go real quickly. There's a lot of information, and I'll make the invitation now at the start. I would love to come back and give you the full presentation if you feel that it's worthy. And I would also invite the audience, I have put brochures out in the hall. You can find us on the web. Look up Michigan Special Education Mediation, and you can find us there. And I would love to come to speak to any organization that feels that it's worthy. So, IDEA was passed in the '60s, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. In that federal act, there is a passage.
I just turned it on.
Well, a couple listed. Deborah Mead.
Yeah.
You want to try them, Mike?
I don't. Okay. You won't be on television.
I can see it loud. You guys just love it.
Did you hear you're not on TV though? Oh, really?
Here.
I guess so.
Here.
I'll try it.
I guess just promise me to stop my time riff.
Yeah, you're fine. Mine, you can hold it or put it on to your shirt.
Can you give me the address?
Of course.
I think it's fine.
Hello? Okay. Hi, my name is Deborah Mead. My address is 801 East Wheeler Road, Midland, Michigan. My husband and I, Alan and I, were both born and raised in Midland. We have two sons. Sean is 10. He has autism and has received support from the ESA since age 2. MPS and ESA would both call him an ESA student, but I call him an MPS student who receives support from the ESA. He's currently transitioning to officially becoming an MPS student with special ed services. Our son Jacob is 8. He attends general ed with an IEP and receives the MPS special ed support services of a full-time para and speech therapy. As a parent, I know there are many behind-the-scenes details that go into running a school system, and it's a very complex job with many considerations. I feel that MPS and ESA do a lot of things correctly. I've worked with many supportive and caring people from both organizations that go seriously above and beyond every day supporting our kids. Along with all that I love, there is room for improvement with both MPS and ESA, and especially in the manner that they work together. I attended the MPS communication meeting. I met with Mike Charo and Janet and Laurel Bucci from the Ark of Midland on March 16 to discuss the realignment plan that they have, that MPS has, as well as the changes that are needed to successfully support kids with autism in our school system and other special needs also. I'm very appreciative of their time. Thank you, Mike, for meeting with me and Janet. So, we talked about where we are and some proposed solutions, and I wanted to share that with the board, all of you. So, one support issue, para availability. The pool of MPS paras is too small. Mike, at all, I say at all because I know the ESA and Midland Public Schools and many people are working on this, they are proposing to raise the pay rate of paras, which will hopefully widen the pool. Mike Charo's proposed solution for para training, because MPS paras do not have enough training to effectively do their jobs supporting kids with autism, and I have many examples here that you can read at your leisure. He proposes, along with the other people, to commit MPS financial resources to professional development and training of MPS paras specifically in autism. And another solution would be that MPS will commit funds to hire ESA paras on a short-term basis for high-risk times such as transition periods. From a parent perspective, it would be best to have these consistent, well-trained ESA paras long-term, but I don't know if that's feasible. Another para problem is communication to paras by the Midland Public Schools. Standard procedure where MPS paras are given a child to work with, with no information about the child, what's about the child whatsoever, short of their name. I can verify this with my son Jacob. It has happened repeatedly. These, my proposed solution, because Mike and I didn't have time to talk about this, is to give, for the Midland Public Schools to give the para prior information before that child, they meet that child, such as also, you know, an overview of the special needs, strategies to support them, and a questionnaire from the parents about getting to know your child. So, let's see. And MPS communication to parents regarding paras, they, um, the, you know, if a para doesn't show up, they call in sick, MPS does not inform the parents. I get a note at the end of the day in my son's backpack saying, well, his para didn't show up, we couldn't find a sub, so he went all day without a para. Luckily, he did okay. But that's definitely not gonna work with my son Sean when he transitions to Midland Public Schools, so I'm looking for more communication there. There's lack of an autism support resource for MPS special ed kids with autism. And so, Mike et al. proposed hiring for the start of next school year, an autism specialist, which is rehiring, you know, Gabe Hatfield's old position. And then, a lack of communication and cooperation between Midland Public Schools and the ESA with reference to the MPS facility usage analysis. A proposed solution is that because these affect ESA programs, that during the usage analysis, the ESA will be consulted, and parents will be able to give input either directly or through the ESA before final decisions are made. I think I'm running out of time, but if you could please read through the rest of this information, I would really appreciate it. There, I really spent hours and days thinking this, rethinking it, trying to write it in a way that I feel fully supports our viewpoint for, on several levels. So, and also, if the school board could please get back to me on the points where I mentioned, do Mike and the school board stand behind this, these proposals? If you could please respond to me, you know, at your earliest convenience after you've had a chance to review them, I really appreciate that. Thank you for your time today and to listening to this discussion of ways in which Midland Public Schools and the ESA work together to support special needs children.
And now, we have another person, another person who would like to request the board. I have...
Joe Johnson.
Joe Johnson? Joe, if you could state your name and your address, and then we'll set the clock at five minutes for you.
Okay. Is this working?
It is.
My name is Joe Johnson. My address is 2916 Riggy Street, Midland, Michigan. I want to say good evening and thank you for allowing me the time to speak here tonight. My wife and I, Lynn, have a student affected by the moving of the ASD classroom to, from Central Park to Chestnut Hill. Excuse me. In the MPS communication, it shows that the ASD program C is moving from Central Park with an additional behavior room that is pending staffing and numbers taking its place. My child has attended what I consider to be the typical classroom environments, and while Chestnut Hill has a great history, and I'm sure it is a fine school, it cannot, in my mind, provide the least restrictive environment and inclusion provided to my child at Central Park. Midland Public School is attempting to put a large focus on keeping my child with his peers through middle and high school, and I certainly can appreciate that. Unfortunately, this does not take into account the peers living in his neighborhood, his local groups and clubs, or attending the same school that his sibling will attend. My child needs to start being viewed and treated like an MPS student that receives ESA support. Maybe that would help ASD children keep a more consistent environment, instead of being looked at like they are not our kids, which may make the decision to move them easier. Instead of the ASD classroom at Central Park being viewed as a problem, it should be viewed as a wonderful opportunity for Midland Public Schools to showcase how great children with autism are doing in the environment that MPS created. Now, I can't guarantee that the publicity on this will result in more or larger donations and increased participation in fundraising events or other monetary gains, but it certainly will not hurt. I would like to ask or suggest that the ASD classroom remain at Central Park for a minimum of another school year. This will allow for time for Midland Public Schools to get a better picture of how this model truly helps children with ASD achieve higher inclusion levels, increased social interactions, and greater academic success. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, I'm, uh, I'm not sure how to pronounce this. Nivea Sheerhart?
It's Niva Sheerhart.
Niva Sheerhart. Thank you.
My name is Niva Sheerhart, and I go to Central Park, and I'm in Sean's class. Sean is autistic, but that's not all that he is. Sean and I have known each other since second grade, and he has made a lot of progress since the previous years. Before, everybody ignored him, and he wasn't in class much. Now, almost everybody eats lunch with him and plays at recess with him. He stays involved in almost all of our activities. He never used to be able to do that. I have a very cool thing I get to do with Sean. It is called Six Minute Solution. And I also get to do peer group. Peer group is where we play games that help Sean communicate and be social with other students. I think it is fun, and I think Sean likes it, too. Sean also has a zone sheet. The zones are green, blue, yellow, orange, red, and purple. I've not seen Sean be in any other zone except green, which is amazing. Honestly, he has taught me so much. I even asked about two questions on my math worksheet. The question, the questions were, what is a 12-sided polygon called? What is a 10-sided polygon called? He instantly said a dodecagon and a decagon. I was so amazed. I don't know what I would do without Sean. I think that Central Park wouldn't be the place it is without kids that think like Sean. I was told that Sean gets to stay through a different program. I think Sean is strong enough to do it, but I worry other kids, who I don't know, won't be able to. I'm here on behalf of not just Sean, but all the kids, but all Central Park kids. I once wrote a book called Separate is Never Equal. I think this is a perfect title for this situation. If they are all in our school, they should be able to stay. If all kids aren't welcome to stay as Central Park explorers, then I don't wanna stay either.
Okay, thank you. You did a wonderful job speaking. Thank you for coming. And now, Kiana Crowe? Did I pronounce that right?
Kiana.
Kiana, thank you.
Hi, my name is Kiana Crowe. I am in Sean's fourth grade class. I know that I have not known Sean that long, but since the beginning of the year. Sean has improved so much. Sean is an awesome, talented, and handsome young man. Something else I think is cool about Sean and how he improved from the beginning of the year is Sean, is last year Sean did not talk to people that much. Now Sean sits with his friends at lunch, and he also hangs out with his friends during lunch, recess, and during breaks we have in the classroom. Something else I think is cool is I get to walk down with Sean to specials. I don't think this move is a good one, because these kids have a routine that they have gotten used to. But if you take them away from the routine, it will take a lot to have these kids get used to the new routine. Not only does the, not only does the public schools help Sean learn, he also helps us learn. Central Parks, Central Park is a place where we accept everyone. Why should we be separated?
Thank you for coming and, and supporting your friend. You did a wonderful job. Do we have any other folks that would like to address the board at this time? Okay, seeing none, and we will move into item, item five, curriculum instruction and assessment. It looks like, item 5.1, we had minutes from February 20th. Ms. Fardell, are you gonna, okay.
We met on Tuesday, February 20th at Plymouth School. We had an overview of the history and future plan for early childhood education. Were provided for the group. Current MPS offerings include the tuition-based four-year-old program at Adams and the income-based Great Start Readiness Program at Plymouth. The current preschool program and young fives classes will be moved to Carpenter Street Elementary for the 2018-19 school year. The new venue will provide the opportunity to alleviate space issues in our current elementary schools, allow MPS to expand offering. The offering of a three-year-old program is being explored, and afford for staffing synergies. The informational session was followed by a tour of the Great Start Readiness Program located in Plymouth, and we also got to tour the facility expansion and renovations concluding, that concluded this session. We had a meeting today. Our next meeting is scheduled for March 19th. All right, look over there. Nice, nice. And the, the kids were just getting up from the nap when we went to, went to visit, and they, they have their own activities, and they, it was just a, a nice environment for the kids. But I'm happy to know that we're gonna have a multitude of kids gathering in the same general space, so that the teachers will be able to work together and interact with one another, and the playground equipment will be appropriate for the kids that are there. So, it's, it's a nice offering. I hope that there are people out there that are willing to consider that and look more in, into it in more detail.
Great, great. Thanks for representing us there. Okay, we will move into item 6.1. We have finance, facilities, and operations, minutes from March 5th.
Yep, we met as a committee March 5th. Guests were Mr. Darryl Dumbrow, Dale Jerome, Mike Morgenberg, the Director of Facilities and Operations. Talked about a few topics. First was HVAC system controls. Mr. Morgenberg demonstrated the HVAC computerized controls that he's able to monitor and control remotely. The new controls and computer software have been installed as part of the bond work being done across the district. The bond update from Mr. Dumbrow shared a first look at the 2019 projects and a possible design-based schedule. Series two of the bonds will be sold in 2019, and priorities are being examined as we finish major work on the elementary buildings. Move to secondary building bond work. Committee also briefly looked at some contingency analysis. Mr. Cooper gave us a, a, I'm sorry, I lost my spot here. Mr. Cooper and Mr. Sher reviewed and discussed the following items with the committee. One, the March budget adjustment. Two, the award of the bid for the purchase and service of printers and copiers. Three, award of the bid for the HH Dow pool recoding. And four, the purchase of furniture for the Woodcrest Maker space, all of which we discussed tonight earlier. Next meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 9th at 5:00.
Great, thank you, Patrick. And then move in for information. We have gifts.
Yeah, we have, if you look at that list, over 30 tonight for $50,914.2. Don't wanna mention any, just to not miss anybody, but you will notice the both athletic booster clubs for both schools, pretty heavy on this one. So is the Jefferson Parent Advisory Committee, some of the nonviolence, and there's no sculpture to Midland Community Foundation, and then the ones that you see from Dow Chemical Foundation Donor Advisory Fund, hopefully I get this right, these two are correct if I don't, but it's the WE movement, the WE innovation is what it was, and so we had teachers that applied, and you can see there's a, some economic games and some mentoring programs and little robots and outdoor learning space they're looking at. So, all those items are there. I do have actually four items, though, because of their total, that require your action, the amount of money there are. We have, again, the innovation, the WE innovation grant for the Go Green Club at Dow. So, there's 5,000 there. Dow's music boosters has a $5,000 gift, and then Midland High Athletics Boosters, two different things. They, they have 10,000 for track and field equipment. I think it's a pole vault, if I remember correctly. Look at these, and I think that's what that one was. And then, 15,320 for football uniforms. And 6-3 does require your action because of the amount of money for the gifts.
Okay, I'll accept a motion for item 6.3.
I move support for item 6.3, gifts totaling $35,320.23. Support?
Moved by Angela, support by Mary. All in favor, say aye. Oh, discuss. Would anyone like to discuss?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Yesterday, I attended the open house at Dow High for their 50th anniversary, and the, and the Go Green Club was there. And they have a Facebook page, but they are putting, using the money to build a greenhouse at Dow High.
Oh, great.
And they have recycling initiatives. It's just really a cool club organization. And the kids were the ones that were all about writing for this grant, so it was pretty
Any other comments? 5,000 for transportation music will be wonderful for the students, and I, I really appreciate the booster clubs taking such an active role over there at Midland High and donating 10,000 to track and field, and then the 15,000 for uniforms. They started doing that several years ago, and, and it's been great for, for the sports teams over there. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All in favor of accepting item 6.3, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimous. Moving into human resources. Janet, do you have this one? Item 7.1.
The Board of Staff extends their deepest sympathies to these families. Mr. Roy Wise, who passed away on February 12th, 2018. Mr. Wise was a business education teacher, department head, and co-op coordinator. During his 23 years with MPS, he worked at both Midland and HH Dow High Schools, retiring in 1993. Mrs. Helen Zonlack, who passed away on March 6th. Mrs. Zonlack was a kitchen assistant in the MPS Food Service Department for 18 years, retiring in 1987. The following staff members announced their retirement effective this year on these dates. Dixie Dent, bus driver, Transportation Department, June 14th. Terry DeLude, teacher, Chestnut Hill, June 15th. Kay Emmons, prior professional, Chestnut Hill, June 14th. Myself, Janet Greif, administrator, August 31st. Bridget Hockemeyer, principal, Central Park Elementary, June 30th. Jolene Lutz, Office Professional Administration Center, June 29th. Mary Larson, teacher, Chestnut Hill, June 15th. Rhonda Leisure, teacher, Chestnut Hill, June 15th. Marty Legg, teacher, Woodcrest, June 15th. Will Lazar, teacher, Midland High, June 15th. Michelle Dodge Meitler, teacher, Northeast, June 15th. Nancy Metz, teacher, Woodcrest, June 15th. Judy Moran, teacher, Jefferson, June 15th. Lori Murphy, teacher, Northeast, June 15th. Mark Pickering, teacher, HH Dow, June 15th. Amy Slayball, teacher, Plymouth, June 15th. Colleen Smith, teacher, Chestnut Hill, June 15th. Colleen Smith, Teacher, Chestnut Hill, June 15th. Corinne Thompson, Teacher, HH Dow, June 15th. Lynn Tofa, Teacher, Woodcrest, June 15th. Bernadette Wood, Teacher, Northeast, June 15th. And Brian Zimmerman, Social Worker of Special, works with special services on June 30th, 2018. So there's quite a few people in the retirement.
Very good, thank you.
This year.
Wish them well.
Thank them for all their years of service.
There's a lot of, if we add up those years of service, that's a lot of people who've been here a long time.
Yes.
Which I'm sure Thicker Sticker words, we will add that up.
We will.
Yes.
Okay, item eight, we have correspondence tuned from the Board of Education. Uh, letters will go out. Uh, item nine, we have scheduled activities for information. You can see that our next meeting, we will have a budget workshop at 6:30 and our regular meeting at 7 o'clock. And now I'll open up to study discussion. Uh, Patrick, how about I start with you?
All right, uh, there's a lot of, a lot of items to discuss that were great before tonight. I'll just say a couple. Um, I don't think I'll get them all, but I'm sure everybody will get it here at some point. But congrats to Midland High and the award. Always nice to see our students and staff awarded for the hard work they put in. Going into Dow High presentation, what struck me the most is just to see the enthusiasm, excitement of the students talking about what they enjoy doing, how they found possible career tracks. It's always nice to see. Um, you really can't fake that kind of enthusiasm. I wish I had that myself sometimes on a daily basis going to work. So happy for the students. Reminder that the village we discussed tonight is in fact a renewal and not a new, not a new, uh, a new bill or a new tax, but a renewal. And it will, I believe, help to improve safety going forward from what we're already doing additionally. Other than that, my last thing for me was, this is my fourth year as of being elected on this board and I have decided to re, rerun for election this year. So I will be, you'll see me on the ballot in November.
Great. Go ahead, Brad.
Uh, just a congratulations to Midland High School for their Education Excellence Award for the Chemick Challenge. Uh, also congratulations to our shining stars. Also was able to attend the Booster Bash Saturday night. It was well-attended. Uh, thanks for everybody that came and supported athletics for both of our high schools. Um, it's great to see and please continue to support them. I know that money goes a long way. They, they do lots of wonderful things with Booster Bash. Congratulations to Dow High for 50 years. That is, that is exciting. Um, really happy to see the Dow High, uh, beginning journalism, update, update online and Your Book Group. Very impressive, um, their enthusiasm, their communication skills. Um, they might've been shy before, but they're not now. Bob did mention that the radio grant for the state police is gone. I would just encourage that we look at other avenues. Maybe there's something else out there that we can look to to keep moving that forward to finish off our buses and our antenna and repeater and it's big, big dollars. And like to, I know you guys have heard me talk about it before, I'd like to finish that one. I'd also like to thank the people from the public that came out tonight, Deborah, Joe, Niba and Tiana. Appreciate that. And congratulations to all the middle public school retirees.
Thank you.
It was nice to, to see everybody come out tonight and express their opinions. Um, a lot of times folks who complain never express their opinion, their opinions and people who want change never speak up. So for them to come out here and, and exercise their right to do so, I thought was, was great. And, um, you know, they had a lot of good points and, and, um, Deborah gave us a pretty comprehensive review and definitely some stuff to think about moving forward. Uh, so it was good, it was good that they came out to do that. Um, the journalism presentation I thought was interesting and Ben, um, made a comment. I don't know if he really thought about it a lot. It was kind of an off-the-cuff. But he said, you know, nobody thinks about behind the scenes when he was referring to the janitors. And for me, as it applies to the journalism piece, I never thought about behind the scenes. It was just kind of something, you know, we get the, the update and the other publications and never really think about all the work that goes into them. And it was really, I guess, enlightening to see everything that goes on and how in-depth that process is. Uh, so those are just a couple of highlights. It was good to see the fund balance is, is healthy, but obviously cautiously optimistic with that. So overall, I thought it was a, it was a great meeting and that's all.
Um, have to agree with what's said. Um, I just wanted to, um, mention again that, that Fragments magazine that the Dow High puts out. I was just amazed at some of the poetry that comes from those kids that you might, at least I had some of them as students and it was like, oh my gosh, I didn't even know that he had that in them. You know, I just saw the chemistry side. So it was really, really cool to see these kids that are artists and poets and, and can write such great work published like that. So that's just an extra piece that they do. And I know they've won a lot of awards. And Kami is just awesome. Uh, the, the amount of time that she puts in beyond the regular school day with those kids. So hats off to her. And lots of retirees, oh my gosh. Um, some real tough slots to, to replace. But, uh, welcome to retirement.
Don't look at me when you say that. I've got a few more years to go. So, all right, um, let's see. You spoke on the Booster Bash, glad you got to go. We had tickets, but we had to celebrate my, well, I shouldn't say have to. We chose to celebrate my son's birthday in Ann Arbor with him instead. Um, congratulations to Dow on their 50th anniversary. Um, really enjoyed the award for the Chemick Challenge. So glad to see that because I was so impressed back. When did they say they were here, September?
September.
When they presented, just what an amazing group of teachers that have put this together and just a great opportunity for students. Um, glad to see that that will continue and move forward. And then very much enjoyed the Dow High presentation. Maggie has been a front of my daughter since they were little and it's just, it's so exciting to see these kids as they grow up and mature and turning into these adults and just so well-spoken, all three of them. And, um, and then also, yeah, Kami, and that's why I brought up the point 'cause I've known just from my kids being friends with kids on that paper how much extra time they put in, the late, late nights and everything. And, um, and it is, it's great to read the papers. We love the papers from both of the, um, schools. Um, in case anyone else is wondering, my daughter informed me yesterday on the 18th of March that that would be exactly two months until the seniors are done. I, I, it, the date didn't mean anything to me, it did to her. So, um, hang in there seniors, two more months. And, um, thank you for your willingness to serve again. I know the next question, I know I'm up for reelection this year too. And I, I will say that I am still considering it. So, um, the last, I think this is my seventh year. We have been through a lot of tough times and I'm really excited about what we have done and where we are going now. And so, um, looking forward to seeing, um, over the next few years as we continue to, um, expand our opportunities and use our bond funds. So I am seriously considering.
Great.
But I will let you all know when I decide.
Thank you, Angela.
Yep.
That would be great news. So that was, that's wonderful.
Well, you know, I mean, I, I ran because of what this district has done for my children and I still feel that way. I ran when they were younger and already. And now that they are, you know, my last one's graduating. I just, this district has so much to offer for kids and I'm so, been so proud to be a part of the board, um, to be able to help that along.
Absolutely, thank you for your leadership in that. Um, I'm looking forward to the budget workshop, um, next month. And, uh, right after, after spring break so we can, so we can have a nice restful spring break and everyone can be safe. I too went to the Booster Bash and that was a, a great event. I, I thoroughly enjoyed that. I'm also looking forward to helping work on the regional enhancement and getting the word out. And we'll, uh, we'll have to work together as a board and support Mike in, in making sure we get those positive messages out to our community so they know how important it is to all of our districts. I too will be running for reelection this year. So, um, I, I sure have enjoyed my time on the board and am passionate about kids and have been for a long time. And I'm, I'm very thankful for this board and the, and the direction and the support that we've been able to move together to get things done. And it's not always you have a strong board that you can move together to get things done. And I appreciate that very much. I also am thrilled with all of the bond work that has gotten done. And, um, so many improvements and just positive comments in the community. And, um, also I appreciate Mike, your, your communique and details to what's going on. And I know our community's looking even for more. So, and I know you're working on that. So I appreciate that. And, um, I think we, we're going in a wonderful direction and I thank you for your leadership with that, that bond and following that through. That's all I have.
Well, off that note, I do think we're heading in an incredible direction. And I, I don't like to say this, but I've been doing this a long time. And, um, this week, I'm a bit upset on a posting that's out on the internet saying that we are not doing a good job that you or I on the bond issue. And so I'd like to address some of those facts. And I'm gonna bring more information forward to back those facts up because, um, I think it's borderline to the point we may consider legal action if you guys would like on some of this stuff because it's very slanderous out there to me. The post states that we are not completing our bond work list, which is not the case at all. In fact, it's, it's credible that we are completing the amount of work that we're doing and the additional work we're doing with rising bond costs. I sent you an article. It's not just us, it's statewide. School bond issues have taken hip because of recovering economy with the contracted prices aren't nearly as competitive as they were. Goods are gonna go up. Goods have gone up. Get ready for aluminum, guys. Aluminum's gonna go up. These are gonna be ongoing issues that we need to be creative and, and work through as we go forward. That's why bonds are flexible. That's why bond language is approved and that allows flexibility to do so. The post admits, admits many facts that are needed for background information. And being a good Catholic boy, I call it lying by omission, omission of a facts very easily. The post represents post bid number six, which includes work at Sebert and Chestnut Hill, which I'll, I'd respond to in a minute. But the first one I'd like to respond to is a budget transfer number five, which was, has not been posted. But I think you need to know the whole relevance of all this in order to understand it. Bond, um, bond transfer number five was done in order to cover the STEM, STEMization that Darryl made up last time and for our elementary budgets to go forward. Um, this work, we had to recover because originally the bond was for a elementary school, not a STEM elementary school to go forward. And we've recovered from that very easily as we go forward. Breaking up budget amendment number five into four categories is the best way to understand it. Category number one would be work, work to be completed by MPS with sinking funds or general funds. And that's why we've built that capital funds to do so. The value of this category is 155,000. It represents toilet partitions, which the district already has partitions and we already do that type of work. Significant savings to the district to do it through our cost versus prevailing wage and through the bond. Dow High School cafeteria folding partition in the cafeteria. That's something our district employees can do. Again, no need to pay a prevailing wage through the bond as well. Paint rusty boiler stacks. This is something our district employees can easily do. Um, again, not prevailing wage going forward. Gym equipment at Jefferson. Um, we've already replaced gym equipment at Midland High through our district employees. Again, savings from, from not prevailing, prevailing wage. Second category, I would call it, work completed or already completed by MPS. This value is 1,556,000. The largest portion of this comes to tech equipment. And it was simply that the bond was built around iPads, which were $595 apiece versus a Chromebook. That's about $300 cheaper. And so that is, that itself sets us in a very good position. All of this equipment has been purchased and deployed. All future purchases will be Chromebook-type purchases as, as technology for those devices have come lower. The second largest category is furniture, which we have spent, and you have proved many of those each night that you've been in, in this room. Um, these amounts have outfitted new media centers, STEM labs, the secure entrances and offices. So that has not been excluded. Category number three, I would call, not presently a priority, but will be reviewed. And you'll see why some of these are in there. 1,750,000 is the value. 1.5 of that is simply the administration center renovation. So we set that aside in order to do, um, our school buildings to meet those budgets. And we can review that going forward. And you, and I'll tell you why. If you recall, we have funds to cover all these if we choose to do so. The second one is State Street Demo, which is next to the Administration Center. Um, we've debated that we may need this for storage. And so therefore, we've set it aside and may wanna look at that in the future. The fourth and final category would be what I'm calling change order, which is about $80,000. And that represents masonry repairs and miscellaneous piping. That's a hidden condition and we expect that when we run into those devices to be able to cover that under our conditions category. That in total amount is 3.5 million dollars and that is how we were able to cover the STEM elementary school going forward. But I must say, if you recall, we have 5.2 million dollars. You can either call that in savings or still in the budget. And I'm okay with either one of those definitions. We also have well over $600,000 in interest. So we are now approaching $6 million to cover any remaining projects, which is less than $2 million. Here are some examples we've also done of added work, which is amounts to well over $2 million. And that's a conservative estimate of work that we've added as we've gone. At Central Park, we've added outdoor learning spaces, added playground equipment, upgraded the finishes. Auditorium upgrades, we stand the brick and exterior, exterior digital sign was added. Renovations to auxiliary spaces, terrazzo polishing, light fixtures, floor tiling and carpet, HVAC equipment and extra doors and windows. Plymouth Woodcrest, we added Woodcrest STEM Makerspace. We added eight audiovisual systems into the special education rooms. We've added kitchen equipment. There was no kitchen equipment built into the bond. Plymouth roof replacement was added. Painting interiors in both buildings, nearly the entire building was painted. Added concrete walks and curbs, additional marker boards and tack strips, full-depth asphalt replacement, technology infrastructure upgrades, all of the ceiling tiles at Woodcrest, lighting, electric and gas controls and moisture sealing on the cement slab at both buildings, where we originally just thought Central Park. Other items, um, that we've done as well, added to it was Northeast Controls, Dow High Controls, boilers from mills, which we moved to the warehouse, aluminum bleachers, which we moved from old Central Middle School to Jefferson Middle School. And we dumped, demoed the majority of the portable buildings on our campuses. And the largest item is asbestos payment, which we have, at this point in every project have removed, had full removal asbestos payment in the district. These were not in the bonds and these were added additional projects. So I think we're managing this quite well as we go. Post bid addendum number six, which was the issue of the post. So post addendum issue was issued to reduce the cost at both Sebert and Chestnut Hill. And that was due to the overpriced after we sent the bids out. The full budget for both these projects have been bid out and will be completed in 2018-19. So we, we are bidding out, or now are spending the money. These are, these are not completed projects. Unlike Central Park, Central Auditorium, Woodcrest and Plymouth, which are completed projects and exceed all bond work lists. Do not judge Sebert and Chestnut Hill until they are completed projects. In addendum number six, there were scope reductions at this time. And all the reductions were redesign, value engineering or price negotiations with suppliers that still meet the intent of the full bond work list. These projects are just starting. And we have 1.5 years before completion to add to these projects through bond savings, district provided work,[1737.31] bond savings, district provided work, general fund projects, or sinking fund projects, as we have done at Central Park, Central Auditorium, Plymouth, and Woodcrest. The Post lists items on, on there as deleted, and I will show you that that is not the case. Chestnut Hill Elementary, it lists 26 interior security doors. Current design meets or exceeds original bond work list. Interior classroom doors are being replaced, and I'll explain that one more later. HVAC replaced. Current design meets or exceeds amount of work list. Completed replacement of HVAC system control and temperature controls. Exterior doors replaced. Negotiating lesser costs for these to do over Christmas break. Already, we've got a $10,000 savings, because we're doing it off-peak time. We will be mindful of aluminum going up in order to move quick with the tariffs on this. The same is case, the same is the case for windows replacement. Already, a negotiated savings to do off-peak time at Christmas, because we were overcost in those areas. Digital sign. I assume this is a digital signage. This display, a single TV, was moved to the media center to improve student occupied spaces instead of the entry space. Downsides. Determine this was not a bond, bond priority and could be completed by MPS staff, like so many of our projects, at reduced cost, particularly with prevailing wage. Pedestals Media Center. Current design meets or exceeds original bond work list. The entire media center is receiving a complete renovation. Lavatory faucets. Determine this is not a bond priority and could be completed by MPS staff, as we have been doing all along. Replace plumbing, piping. Determine this was done by, not a bond priority and completed by MPS staff, as we have been doing, at a cost savings. Tech equipment, I've already explained, makes significant savings there, and the iPad to Chrome purchase. Repair masonry. Minor repairs to be reviewed onsite. Full restoration spec deemed unnecessary. The minor repairs will be completed as, as needed. Media center lighting. Current design meets or exceeds original bond work list. Media center getting a complete renovation. Furniture. Current design meets and exceeds all bond work list. Remodel the bathrooms. Determine this was not a bond priority and could be completed by MPS staff as a significant saving, as we have at Carpenter and Woodcrest Elementaries. These were only partitions in the bond. So as you can see, we really have been doing the work we wanted. Not done. We have almost $6 million to cover any projects as we choose to go forward to fit that bond up. The bond up has been met, and I will be bringing this to FFO with documentation to show, and back to the full board again, as we presented before, for your information. My other items is, very excited about something that we have created called Prodigy Program, I wrote to you a while back, called Promoting Rigorous Opportunities to Develop Innovative and Gifted Youth. And so we've been doing cross-grading for quite some time, as some of you are aware of. We would like to expand that to even a higher level with some of our GT kids, and so I'm really excited about that program. We piloted this year at Seibert. We're going to expand next year to, help me, Brian.
Woodcrest and Adams will be the year after.
Yep, and then they'll follow the year after. So this is going to be a really nice program for our highest learners, but outside the school day, you know, so we still have that mix in the schools as we go forward. This week, I presented at Noon Rotary with Sheriff Scott Stevenson and Lieutenant Matthew Burchard on the very hot topic of school safety. Thought it went very well. Shared what we've done, shared what we are looking at to do as we go forward, and certainly legislation around school safety was a hot topic as well. I think we negotiated that fairly well as we went forward. This, you know, as you know, both our MASA, MASB has come out against arming teachers, but certainly is in support of maybe arming law enforcement, and so that's kind of the stance. I share it as my personal opinion, since I don't speak for you in that situation. Enhancement Village, we've talked about, vital for us, very vital, as we go forward, over $1 million each year in funding to us. Agenda group transition, seems like I've done this way too many times in the five years I've been here. I'm not sure I've kept that group together, so maybe it's me, you know, maybe they don't like to work that close with me or something, so, but they do a great job for us. But Janet is planning to retire in August, and so as I ask you guys, when you, those who are around that interviewed before, you, one of the things they mentioned at that time was, all three of them were going to retire, and Bob Cooper was put in as an interim, and that would be my appointee if I chose to do so. And of course, it didn't take me long to figure out that Bob was the keeper, and so Bob was put in, and then we've replaced multiple times, and at this time, we are going to move Brian over to the Associate Superintendent of what we now call ASAP, Administration of Student Services Innovation Programs. That doesn't roll off as easy as FFO or CIA. We like our acronym, Brad, as you said. And then Penny Miller Nelson will come in as our CIA Associate Superintendent. If you know Penny, she's well ready for this position and to go forward, so that'll be a great transition. But as good as Bob is, we're going to lose him in a year from now, and so we got one more transition. I think I have a little bit of a concept there, but too early to fully talk about it as we go forward, but we'll do that as well. Special education realignment plan, we've discussed that tonight with parent input, and we will review that and get them a response as we go forward. So I will bring that back into our agenda committee, and then back to you on any input we've taken in tonight. The challenge book, you read Brian's final opinion on his, so it's at Brian's level at this point in time. If the parent agrees, we're done. If the parent does not agree, it would come to my level, and then I'll give my position, and worst-case scenario, it'll come all the way to you as a full board. So we'll see where that goes as we head forward. That is all I have for you tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for all the details and the work putting that